Roll call.
Oh, Steve.
You call the roll?
Mr. Kelli?
Present.
Mr. Coe?
Frozen.
Mr. Matt?
Present.
Ms. Palastreyne, present.
Present.
We stamp it with blood.
The allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone. Do we have anyone signing to speak this evening?
Yes, I'm able to sign.
Signed?
Any board members? I am here on behalf of the Hampshire Township Historical Society, giving you a little update on what's happening, and also Bill Swallowell, our vice president, is here as well. And I would like to let you know that the Historical Society is very alive and doing very well. We currently have forty-three members. We have interviewed sixteen seniors. We had anticipated more, but because of illness and some of these schedule changes and so forth, not quite as many as we would have hoped. We've also established a website that we're developing in hopes of making it more user-friendly and have eventually available all of our programs, which we are digitally recording, and of course, our senior interviews, the senior side release, and those are recorded as well. So we're developing what we think is a verified oral history of Hampshire's prior decades and years. Next week, our program is Farms to Neighborhoods, and it's about Hampshire area development in the past and in the present. Our speakers are oral group and our president, Mike Reed. We're looking forward to that event. I do have a brochure, and there are brochures here on all of our programs that are coming. I want to make special mention in February, it's going to be laughter stories with Tom Gettleman and Fred Rackhouse. We hope you'll try to attend that. And next June, we're going to have a downtown walk. So we'll be, of course, showcasing the improvements and beauty of our special block, our festival block in Hampshire. Probably the most important development that we've decided to focus on now is a capital campaign. There's such a need for us to establish a location, a visibility, a place to receive more memorabilia and protect it, categorize it, display it, and expand the collection that we know is out there in the community. Our campaign goal is three hundred thousand dollars, and our goal is to raise that by the summer of 2026. As you know, 2026 is the 150th anniversary of our village of Hampshire, and it is also the 25th anniversary of the Historical Society. So it's really a beautiful coming window of time to focus on eventually having a location. So with that, we'll be focusing on fundraising projects, of course. You know, there's the challenge of inflation in the current economy, but we're forging ahead. Bill Swallowell, by the way, is chairman of the building location committee, and his expertise in construction and building integrity is a great asset at this time. So in the meantime, we'd like to figure out renting a location for the next three and a half years, in that that would provide, again, visibility, a presence, and, you know, this window of time to do our fundraising, but to do it hopefully in the context where we can find a location to rent, maybe rent with option to buy. But that's our serious thinking at this time. Do we have the funds? Well, that's a challenge, too, but we honestly may be wanting to explore some support from the village if that might be possible. I want to thank each of you individually and collectively for the support of the Historical Society. It's clicking along, and if you can, come to our public programs. We're averaging thirty-five to forty in attendance. They're free, and we're excited. Glad to be on the move. Thank you.
That's it for this evening.
All right. I'd just like to make one comment before we get started. As you know, we have a voting member of the board remotely this evening, so I try to keep conversations to a minimum. It makes for a better experience online if you can hear what's going on in the room. And conversation in particular along that wall is picked up very well by that microphone, so just kind of keep that in mind as we go through this evening. Before you have the minutes from October 20, 2022, we will read them at this time.
It said two questions on possible additions on page six, under the committee commission reports. The public relations report, I thought, was by trustees Kelly and Mont. I think it was jointly done, so. And it does have the S for trustees. It's just missing the and Mont.
Don't remember.
Yeah, that's how I remember it as well. Both trustee Mont and I reported for the PR committee.
Okay.
And then the second thing is just a question, if we could add it, is under see for public words, the fact that, you know, Adam did that terrific job fixing that, I was wondering if we could add to the minutes a comma after thousand at the very, very end, and just add saving the village approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars. It was talked about. I don't know if that's appropriate to put in the minutes, but...
It was actually posted on Facebook just like that today.
I did see that, too. So if we could add that, I just...
We haven't corrected records, so that's just Facebook, for sure.
Yeah. Well, I know, you know, trustee Coe actually talked about it, too, so...
Yeah, that was mentioned.
Yeah, okay. Then it would be comma after the thousand dollars, comma, saving the village approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars. I used an exclamation point, but that's your price.
Well, do we know that the repair, the repair was over forty grand?
That would have been to replace the whole deck.
But how much over the forty grand? I mean, if we're going to split it?
You said about one thousand dollars is what was...
In material. They spent a grand in material.
So, okay, in your, so in your expert opinion, how much do you think you saved the village?
I don't, I don't know how much the actual quote was to repair it.
About save the village thousands of dollars.
I think the way it's, I'm fine with the way it's quoted right here in the minutes.
Because it said the quoted repair was over forty thousand.
Right.
That's fine, through in the approximately.
I'm not going to split here, sir. What do you guys want to do?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the changes presented by trustee Paul. Second, questions, comments, concerns? My little bubble, please, Mr. Kirk.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Holder?
Epstein.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Palastreyne?
As you know, we've had some open terms, open positions on our beautification committee. Tonight, we have Ms. Bankowski and Ms. Mayor of the Downtown Beautification Committee currently. They're up for reappointment. And our chairman, Mr. Bill Swallowell, is here. Their paperwork is included in an order in the packet. No doubt in my mind that they will make great, great strides in our beautification committee, as they have over the last very many years. I think the work that they've done has been, like, really amazing downtown, and I think your leadership, Mr. Swallowell, is going on parallel, and I think your marks will be left on top for a long time. So if anybody has any questions or anything they'd like to add at this time. Uh-oh.
Oh.
That was the teacher's slate.
No, I think the work that you guys do is incredible. Downtown was beautiful. The streetscape coming in, just everything is really tied together nicely. So thank you, guys, for all the hard work that you put in. It's wonderful.
It takes a lot of hours.
It does.
And I know, and you can tell that it's all your touches. Like, realistically, I mean, I know it doesn't go unnoticed in the comments that we get how downtown has turned out, and the work that you guys continue to do is, it's amazing. All right, so does anybody have any questions for said appointments? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Michelle Bankowski to the Downtown Beautification Subcommittee, term ending in 2025. So move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kirk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Holder?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Palastreyne?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
I will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Jeanne Mayor to the Downtown Beautification Subcommittee for the term ending in October of 2025.
Ooh.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kirk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Palastreyne?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Holder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, of course, but now's your time to split if you want. Thank you for coming. Brilliant, really. I appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would ask your consideration of a resolution approving the First Amendment to Declaration of Construction Obligations relating to Prairie Ridge Development. Let me make this comment. The next two items are both related to Crown and Prairie Ridge, but let me say that they're completely disconnected, two separate topics. This first one is simply cleaning up some language between the companies, actually, about who will do the public improvements for neighborhood R. The townhouses over here near Town Road. So that's what this is doing. All the obligations will be carried out there in the agreement, all the obligations to the village. It's just a matter of them dividing the obligations up between Crown and here. So you do have an agenda supplement for Mr. Schuster in your packet. You also have the amendment, and you also have a map or a some engineering drawings kind of showing you where the public improvements are. So with that, we would ask you to consider it.
As far as discussion goes, I just want to say that I talked to Mr. Schuster about, or Mr. Schuster, Mr. Hedges, about this three or four times in the last two weeks, and I know that the village staff has been working really hard on making this as clear as possible. So if you have any questions, we can certainly direct them to Mr. Hedges, but I think this is pretty self-explanatory of the agenda supplement, but I would like to open it up for any questions at this time.
I just have one clarifying question on the resolution itself and the language of the resolution. In the language of the resolution, it refers to Hampshire East LLC and Hampshire West LLC. In the fourth whereas paragraph, it then refers to the conveyance of neighborhood R. By Crown to D.R. Horton. Is Crown also Hampshire West LLC or Hampshire East LLC? Are they one and the same?
Hampshire West LLC is a company that's owned by Crown.
So who's the current construction obligation to Hampshire West LLC or Crown?
Hampshire West LLC.
Okay, so should the fourth whereas state that it's...
What if you might, we could change that from KJ out to Hampshire West LLC right there.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was, if we were talking about the same company or not. That's why I wondered if it just, if it's fine the way it is, I'm good. I just was curious.
So should we change that in the actual resolution? Or, I mean...
Go ahead, dear.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Palastreyne?
I just want to make sure that the staff is all okay with it and comfortable with the changes that are in it.
Absolutely. We've been working with them closely.
Anyone else have any other questions? I will then entertain a motion to approve twenty-two, resolution twenty-two dash twelve with the changes that we just spoke about in relation to changing Crown to Hampshire West LLC in the fourth paragraph. The resolution approving the First Amendment to the Declaration of Construction Obligations relating to the Prairie Ridge Development. Questions, comments, concerns?
Sorry, one more question, just to verify. Mr. Hedges, both parties listed in here, Crown or Hampshire West LLC, and D.H. Horton have agreed to this amendment?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Mr. Kirk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Palastreyne?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Holder?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
We should pass six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would now ask your consideration of a presentation, a concept plan of subdivision for Prairie Ridge north of Kelly Road, submitted by Crown Community Development. No formal actions taken tonight. I'll just introduce this briefly. Just two weeks ago, Crown was here to do formally the same thing they're doing tonight. We had quite a few questions last night. Since then, they've been to the plan commission. The plan commission discussed this project and voted five-zero to recommend it to the village board. We did just receive the plan commission opinion today, printed, but sorry, Chairman Marat was not able to make it tonight. They did have brief discussion about this project. As I say, and Josh says, I made agenda supplement. They were very complimentary about open space and the plan in general, and recommended to the board. You also received a rather detailed analysis from me about a week ago, ten days ago, about this project. And in your packets, you have an agenda supplement from Josh, as well as some statistics regarding the lot sizes, the number of lots in the new and the former proposal, as well as the fee structure and the changes in the fee structures. So then beyond that, you have the new plat and the old plat, and they're both up at the dais today. So there will be no action tonight. The Crown will present once again, and you can ask questions. It is important tonight that we give Crown feedback. While there's no vote tonight, it's important that they get feedback, because after plan, maybe they go back in the next six months, putting together a preliminary plat, as well as a given open plat.
Welcome back.
Thanks for having me.
Have us. Does it feel like 2005?
Better than...
So last time we were here, we gave a presentation. We're going to give an abbreviated presentation tonight to sort of refresh your memories a bit on what we're proposing here. As Jay had mentioned, it's very important, you know, you're not taking action tonight, but it's very important that you provide us as much feedback as you feel comfortable for one reason. You know, our next stage here is preliminary engineering, preliminary plating, which is very expensive considering the size of the subdivision we're talking about here. So it's important to us that you speak very candidly and let us know your thoughts on the plan. With me tonight is Chris Nass, who heads our sales and marketing department, marketing specialist Drew Wright, and our planner Rich Olson. So, and I can answer, they can answer plan questions, market questions, whatever detail appropriate there. I can answer engineering construction questions. So with that, I want to turn it over to Rich, and we'll give a presentation, and we'll, we'll have more stuff.
Good evening. Thanks, Dan. Again, my name is Rich Olson. I'm here where we're associates. We did the plan, and thankfully been asked to come back and appreciate your time tonight. As you know, we were in front of the plan commission, got really good feedback from them, and we're really happy to be back in front of you again. I thought what I would do is just share with you what I, something that we didn't discuss last time, that might be some relevance regarding how we came up with the plan. Crown came to our firm, and they came to us because we worked with a lot of the developers in the Chicago Land Region. So we, the benefit of that is, we know all of their product. We know what they like to build. We know what the trends are based off of that. And furthermore, Chris had said to me, said, what we want you to come up with a really great plan that focuses on something that obviously that the builders can, can get on board as a successful plan, as well as something that's, that's going to be good for the public community, as well as residents that are going to be living there. And we're like, that's great. We, we would love to have that challenge, and we took on that challenge, and we worked back here for you to talk about it a little bit more detail. And I think one of the most important things about that is creating the best plan, the density was evolved not for the sole purpose of that plan, it evolved out of the plan, the plan that we created. And we, some of the density that we have is based off of, of course, all the different product types that we have, and it's different than the previous plan that you guys have seen and approved for various reasons. But we've improved this plan in many, many ways. For the open space connectivitys, all the integrated neighborhoods that you see, the grittiness of the old plan, if you look at the old plan, has completely gone away. We've created a spine road that really helps to bring the entire plan, both on the east side and the west side, together that the previous plan didn't have. And our density is about 2.01 dwelling against breaker over the entire plan, and we did some research, and we can talk about that in further detail, but that is on the low side of the density for communities that you see out there currently being built today. And just for perspective on Oakstead, that plan that we, that we brought in for you is about half the size of this plan, but if you look at the numbers, it is about the same density, and it also has about the same amount of open space. The nice thing about this plan, our open space on this current plan, is integrated a lot better into the current design, because we're able to utilize some of that in between the developed areas and creating the pods. And so we're, we're, we're super excited about this plan. I know I went over it in pretty good detail last time, but I thought it'd be good just to share with you the, how we, you know, evolved the plan. And of course, we worked with, with the staff and going back and forth there. It was a great experience. We loved the feedback that we got there. We made changes essentially from that standpoint. And the other thing that is nice to note is this plan has different product types than the other plan has. You know, they had sixty-foot lots. We got some sixty-six and seventies here. We have, you know, an age-targeted product, which is really nice, two different townhome types, and a smaller single lot development type that will really add some depth to the plan itself. And then, of course, we spent a lot of time making sure that not only was the overall concept of the spine roads and the pods, but we also made sure that that first phase of the development on the east side of the development is really set up so for success, because there's a lot of the products are right there, right ready to go, and all the developers can come in and start building, you know, within a very short amount of time. So without going through in detail each of the pods, certainly we'd love to answer any questions you have, and we just, we're really proud of what we got here, and hopefully, since the last meeting that we had, maybe you have different questions, but we're definitely here to answer questions that you have.
In the 2005 preliminary plat, how many total units were going to be built off of that 2005 plan?
I don't have the exact numbers on, on me, but we'll get that here. I know there's a little skewed because it's south of Kelly and we're going north.
Yeah, apples, apples comparison. North of Kelly Road, it was, if you don't invite it, it was 1,280 units.
And the new one?
1,978, North of Kelly.
So you're shrinking lots to get to that higher number?
Yeah, it's, it's a combination of, of, the old plan had a mix of 10,000. The previous plan that was approved had a mix of 10,000s, eight, I think, seven, if I remember correctly. And this one doesn't have the 10,000, the larger ones. We do have some of the seventy-foot wide lots that were proposed on the last plan, and for sure, it's a matter of the, there's smaller lots involved, and there's more townhomes, I think, involved, and we've got a smaller product type in there as well.
There's actually a good deal of 15,000 square foot lots on the original plan.
Can you elaborate on that just a little bit? You and I have had conversations about the fact that there were lots included in the original plan so that it would pass the board at the time that was not even marketable back then. I mean, there were lots that were over a hundred foot wide that were part of the plan, because the village board was not, was digging their heels in pretty hard at that time. And it, back then, in 2005, when this was originally done, hundred-foot lots weren't selling then, especially in this type of development. So I'm not, I just, I just think it's important, I just think it's important to know that there were, there were lots in that plan that they were intentions of or thought of. The thought process was, when it would be built out, whenever that would be, that there would be changes that would have needed to be made into the plan that was approved at that time. How many of those lots were there? I'm not speaking out of turn, am I?
No, you're not. Well, I will say, and Chris can certainly respond better to market than I can. I can tell you, 2005, there was more market for those lots, but not a great market, right? There was zero market for those lots now, right? And, you know, we, we set a plan that we, we thought we could sell, but those abortions would have been very, very, very slow in 2005, and now they didn't exist.
So how many of those over, like, hundred-foot lots or so were there in the original plan?
Yeah.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it's important.
Yeah, I...
Oh, no, sir, Dan.
I, I'd have to do the calculation, but...
I'm at the corner, Dan.
Yeah. So I can, I can show you. So we got, so we can do the calculation. We got sixty-two of them up in this area right here.
I've got it right here. Okay, so 15,000 square foot lots there were, if, I can't even use my bike.
Hundred fifty-two lots.
Yeah, a hundred...
Of 15,000 square foot lots.
Yeah, and then 500 of the 12,000 and...
Three hundred seventy-six of the 12,000.
Oh, this must be an old idea.
Yeah, three seventy-six of the 12,000 square foot lots, and 536 of the 10,000 square foot lots. And, you know, all of the lots that we sold to date, south of the blue line here, no, 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 no.
What, what is the average size south of the blue line issue, Paul?
South of the blue line, there's sixty-five foot wide lots, 8,000 square foot, the bulk of the vast majority are 8,000 square foot.
And how many of those, how many of those type of lots are included in the new one? About 8,000 square foot, just for...
Okay, so, yeah, so we, we have, and I have to, let's see, we've got the, the largest lot size that we have is the 71 by 125. We have 364 of those. The 66 by 125, we have 100 of those. The smallest slot size, we have 239 of those.
What's that, what's that size?
The 44 by 110 plus. That's the smallest amount that we have.
But, okay, but those are not, when you say lot sizes, and it's hard, I think my mind, and I might get you in a dozen, but when you say the small lot sizes like that, my mind almost automatically goes to single-family homes on a small lot, and that's not what's happening in those cases, correct? Those would be townhouses, duplexes?
No, the townhomes that we have are not on lots themselves. They're...
Okay, so those would be single family.
Those would be all single family, yeah.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, and then you've got 600 townhomes, and then you've got future school site, municipal site, and...
Those, those sizes, those types of lots are for the townhome buyer who would prefer to have a single family, that's all. So that's, that's really what those are. And again, I just began turning because I'm not at work.
Yeah, but I can answer the questions as they come up.
And, and just for perspective, you know, looking at, because I, we, we did the same process that we did in Oakstead, and the Oakstead had the same, similar type of issue, and then we downsized from, from the bigger lot sizes there, which had the larger 10,000, and we went down to the same lot size that we have here, with the exception of the smallest product size that we have, which is a new, it's a whole different dynamic, adds a lot of depth to the product. So, but in general, we've done the same, pretty much the same thing. And actually, what we've done here, instead of the sixty-foot wide lots, we got sixty-six. The Oakstead had sixty-foot wide perspective, and I think seventy-foot wide lots there, as, as well as seventy-ones here. So we're similar to that sort of dynamic. And if you look at the plans, the really nice thing about that is, is that we're able to create a much better layout. It's not as gritty. We're able to get a lot of curvilinear features to the roadway patterns. We're able to weave in open space trails between pods now. There's just so much more. We're even able to, in almost every single pod, add an interior park space. We could add, we could actually add more lots, but we didn't. We added park...
I don't mean to cut you off, but I think that it's, I think that it's important for the board to think about is, we have one type of product in the village as it is. You know, we have single-family homes, and we have some, we have dual, well, I shouldn't say one type of product. We have single-family homes, decent, and... decent and bigger lots, if you will. We've got um, the duplexes and we've got the townhomes, right? So then the townhomes that are typically of the row style. But we don't have any of the type of active adult community places. We don't have any places for people that are just starting out that may not want to be in a townhome, but the townhomes are the only thing that they can afford. And we don't, we don't have that different type of feel. I'm not suggesting that every development moving forward should be something of this nature. I'm just saying that we, you know, as our community ages and or gets started, we don't have anywhere, anywhere for them to go. So, I mean, and I think that if you look at a development like this with the different types of offerings that's that's, you know, slated and the different lot sizes, I know that everybody looks at and go, oh my gosh, that's a lot of homes and that's a lot more, and I, and I get it because it is, let's call it what it is. But at the same time, you know, James Farm just started kicking off. And you know, we saw Hampshire Highlands and Tuscan Woods and, and, and Lakewood and it's all the same type of product all the way in the village. I don't think that we have anything like this anywhere with a small lot size unless you look right in Old Town area. So that's just my, that's my thought process. I mean, I certainly welcome all your guys' thoughts and opinions as, as we go through this. I just
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I was just gonna say, I, I, I have a couple of things. One, I just want to apologize. I think in the earlier discussion, I referred to D R Horton as D H Horton, so my apologies on that. I uh, I do want to thank the staff for putting together the figures and comparisons from the original to the proposed. I know there's been a lot of questions of how many, what size lots were there in the original versus the proposed. So I appreciate that, that you put that comparison in there. Um, so for the, the, the folks from Crown, and sorry, I can't see you or, or I'd refer to you directly. Um, the, the areas of this map that are referred to as existing floodplain, is that buildable land? And if it is, is it that it would require a lot of work to become buildable since it is existing floodplain? Or, or what's your feedback on if you were to build on that land, what would be required? Or are you, are you even allowed to since it's existing floodplain?
So it's a great question. Um, most of what you see, the large open slot areas are, are floodplain, right? So obviously we can't build a floodplain, particularly in the repairing corridors. Um, for example, to south of Melrose Road, you see it, the tree line, that's, that's a repairing corridor floodplain. But there's also large uh, open space areas, um, such as the park along Kelly Road that is above and beyond floodplain that will be leading to the uh, Park District and also the park up in, up on Melrose Road. Those are beyond the floodplain. Um, now there is, as you get further south off of Melrose Road and that, that green space, you're still not in floodplain, but the, the soils do become more difficult. Um, but those two areas, I think those two big parks were, were um, always contemplated both in two thousand and five and then again today as um, recreation at large uh, regional parks. So, but they would normally be buildable areas.
Yeah, and tho, and those parks were a part of the original two thousand and five, correct?
They, they were, they were. And I will say the difference in, in this plan, you'll also see a lot of those um, in, in Rich's plan, and this is what I think we really like about it is particularly along the spine roads, a lot of green space, uh, more uh, linear green space areas um, in the, along the spine road and around the gas rightaways that we did not have in the original two thousand and five plan. So I think that adds a lot more flavor and character to the, to the plan. Those are open space areas.
Okay, thank you for that. I, just one thing for, for the board to consider uh, in looking at this, and this is what I've learned from that staff analysis. When I look at the proposed versus the original, and I understand smaller lot and, and the uh, helping to bring affordable housing in. So I, I think that's a good thing that we find ways to, to either vary the real estate offerings or make things affordable within town. That said, the largest lot in the new proposal is four feet more narrow than the smallest lot in the old proposal. And the smallest lot for single family homes in the per, new proposal is thirty one feet more narrow than the smallest lot on the old proposal. And so we're not talking about a little change here. In some cases, in the smallest, the two hundred and thirty nine lots that are forty foot, forty four foot wide, or at least according to the figure one that I'm looking at. Um, you're talking about fifty six percent of the smallest lot of the original proposal. So while President Reed, I agree, having variety and, and variability of the types of real estate being offered, I think that this has gone from maybe one extreme to another, and I would just ask the board to consider that when you, when you're looking at, at the information. I, I get the affordability and the, and the market is going that way, but I think that maybe there's a middle ground that can be found between a hundred foot lot and dissecting all the way down to forty four foot lots when the smallest on the original was seventy five foot.
And with that, my question, of the six hundred ninety three more homes that you plan to build now versus the old five, did you shrink the lots through the entire thing to, to garner the real estate for those seven hundred new homes?
It, it was a result of, of right sizing these lots, right? You know, to look at the market. You know, the, the lot sizes were determined based upon what, you know, the builders are, are buying and what the, what their customers are buying, what the customers want. And that was a result of, of those smaller sized lots.
I think what I understood his question to be is, is, is the reduction in size throughout the entire development or are there any?
It is throughout the entire development.
I see your question. Okay. Um, I'd like to follow up with my question about the parks and the open spaces. Are these things that will be ceded to the Hampshire Park District or are these restricted just to this development? Um, I see two dog parks and two very large parks as well as many, many, many open spaces. You mentioned the trails earlier, so.
Short answer is you've got the, the future community parks, large one in the northwest corner, uh, thirty nine acres there and in the south on the uh, east side of Harley, on the southeast side of future community parks, twenty, twenty nine acre park there would be dedicated. All the other ones would be part of the association managed and maintained by um, the association itself. Uh, including all the larger open spaces, trails.
It'd be establishing a large association.
Interesting order, just for the record, uh, the Park District prefers not to take title to those, so until now.
I think there's been a lot of discussions with them to, to understand exactly what, what makes sense for them to, it, it certainly if they were believed that they wanted more land, we would be able to do that for them.
Certainly, and, and they, we've had a lot of conversations with them and they are very interested in the, the large park off of Kelly Road and the large park up on Melrose Road.
And the trails?
And the, the trails would, uh, trails would lead to those parks. They'll determine what kind of trails they would build within those parks. We'll bring and see the parks for them, uh, but we'll bring the trails to them and they'll take it from there. As far as any other ball fields or playground equipment, they'll take care of that. But trails beyond that and all the other green space, the trails exhibit that we presented last time, um, will be constructed by us and maintained by the HOA.
So it was seven miles of trails.
Seven miles.
Will be.
Eight miles.
It actually has a whole state.
Open all.
All?
Yeah.
All of H O A.
It'll be only maintained by the HOA, then it will be open.
I, I don't think the HOA can restrict people from using public spaces.
That's why I'm asking.
I know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. I don't think like up in Lakewood, I, you know, there's a playground up there. It's not under lock and key. And so I think that if anybody wants to go there, they could go up and use it. If something gets damaged, the HOA needs to pay to get it fixed. However, the pool, on the other hand, and the community center, that's gated and they would be able to restrict access, but trails, they they can't restrict.
You're, you're exactly right, I swear. I mean, it is, um, it is privately held property, right? But there's, there's just no way to enforce who uses it if it doesn't exist, so.
Because it's not a gated community.
Actually, probably from that. Yes.
So it is what Mr. Kelly stated correct that the the lots from the old to the new are are that different?
Yes, they are. They are. They are smaller, yes.
And trustee coat, just to clarify, my my math was a little off. I claimed fifty six percent difference between the smallest and the smallest from before and after. It's actually fifty four percent, but it's still a pretty significant decrease.
It is, but it is also, it's again, it's different as we discussed last time. It is a different buyer than it was in two thousand and five. Millennials don't want big lots.
And they're different products, too.
Different products. Chris can probably speak better to market and product.
We're not. We're not looking to show we're in the same sized house like the terminology on the large that we were using on the larger lot or the larger smaller lot on the original plan. And we are in this one, it would be a totally different concept.
But we don't want to regret what what we're doing and tricking the lots to a point where it's going to haunt us.
I agree.
Thank you.
I could speak to the the goals of the plan. One point that I would be reiterate, Mr. Mary, you had commented on, which is providing an opportunity for current residents of Hampshire to have options within the community that don't otherwise exist. So, for example, if you have young folks that are your friends with or a family that are looking to buy a home and stay in Hampshire. Today, if they were to go to very rich single family, they'd be looking at a four hundred and fifty, you know, four hundred thousand dollar home as an average sales price or higher. That isn't considered to be affordable for a first time buyer who's, for example, in their twenties. That's very much unattainable. So that that's one goal. Similarly, if you raise your hypothetically, you raise a family in Hampshire. You love their town, you're committed to it, and you want to stay here, but you want to have single level of living. This community provides an opportunity to stay in a town that you love. Where otherwise it might be a struggle to find this type of living. Additionally, you know, I'll just make a comment that D R Horton introduced their pricing today for the townhomes. And the pricing for their townhomes is not too dissimilar from what Ryan Homes was selling their homes for just a few years ago. So if you think about that, it really shows a pretty interesting trajectory. If you add on to that, that the person who lives in a townhome has to also pay an HOA fee. The cost of living in that home is actually higher. But there are just people who want to live in that type of housing style where there would be, you know, low maintenance. A lot of people in this generation are looking for experiential living, and this provides that opportunity.
Can you can you kind of talk maybe, I think, the the difference in products like, you know, somebody that's looking to start out and they want to buy a townhome. What's the average pricing of something like that? And then compare it to one of these single family homes on the smaller lot?
Yeah. So I think the best example that I just mentioned was D R Horton literally just published their pricing for their townhomes. I think the average sales price on those between the two plans is two eighty ish, two ninety before before any type of options they might add in the home. And so everything would really kind of go up from there. That's sort of the baseline. The other thing I think that's.
Now, in comparison to the single family, the smaller single family.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. I would expect those to be, and you know, it's a little bit sort of getting on our crystal ball. But I don't expect those to be when the time comes to be in the in the three hundred, you know, low three hundreds. So the other thing I wanted to point out, which is a goal that was ours, but I believe this would be a shared goal for all of us is while we can never eliminate the possibility of how the market affects us. This plan serves to insulate the community from market changes. For most of us room, we've seen in our lifetime multiple housing cycles. We've seen it go up here. We've seen it go down here. One of the most fascinating housing cycles to me has been what's happened in the last just two and a half years. I don't think I've ever seen a housing cycle so condensed in terms of what can happen in the span of such a short period of time. So what this plan does is it allows us to sort of weather those cycles more resilient. By having different types of homes that when interest rates more than double and are projected. So rates have gone from, as you all know, right, have gone from upper twos to now we're in the seven, seven and a quarter. The Fed has now signaled that by they have no intent, they have every intention to keep raising rates. I project that we're probably looking at seven and a half to eight percent interest rates by the spring. That's adding five hundred dollars onto somebody's payment every month. So you have to have something that insulates and shows, if I may, shows the residents in your community that you are working to provide options for them.
So thanks for the first mention. The difference between these two plans, this plan introduces a new product that we didn't have before, single, single story living and the active adult, right? But also we had townhomes in the original plan, but not nearly as many as we're proposing. That goes to the affordability. But it's not only interest rates, it's the cost of constructing homes, it's the cost of constructing roads, or anything. It's just trying to try to make these homes affordable. The other point I'd like to make is the reason why I just gentleman that here is he hired, he does really good work, first and foremost, right? But he also works for all of the national builders everywhere in Chicago, and not a lot of them here, right? But he knows their product, right? So he he designed his plan knowing the product that sells, that that these that these companies are selling. So that that was a big part of the the genesis to how we got to the size of these lots. And again, that, you know, that that resulted in in the higher density and lots.
Other interesting trend that I think this community can be on the forefront of is lifestyle. What we have learned, especially in the last, quite honestly, in the last three years in the pandemic, was something that highlighted this in a way that we've never seen before, which is intergenerational living. Where a lot of grandparents, as you know, they move to be closer to their children and grandchildren. I just had a friend of mine today said, we're moving to Florida, we're following, I'm sorry, Georgia, they're following their kid. But a lot of people do. So in the plan that you're looking at, in those neighborhoods where it says active adult, that gives the opportunity for grandma and grandpa to live near their family in proximity. And proximity is a beautiful thing for community.
So I have a question for the the Crown gentleman. Do you have an existing development with this type of lot sizes that we can reference or look at in a different community?
Oh, um, Brown community development. We are in communities all across the country, ranging, we have partnerships. And then we have communities we do on our own. We have partnerships and communities we do on our own, ranging from Seattle, Denver, Texas, Tampa, Indianapolis, Chicago, and Pennsylvania, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. And yes, one of our partnerships is a community called Ten Trails in Seattle. And they have almost every product line you could possibly imagine. And it is just a dynamite community. If you you know, Crown, you know who we are. You know that we really strive to build and design a community that stands the test of time and that's that has a premium looking feel to it. As Dan mentioned, I've been with Crown for three years. Prior to that, I spent twenty seven years looking for home builders, and I can tell you that this plan is far more unique and far more has many more beautification elements than I would have planned as purely a builder. That's what we do when we commit to the language. Also, too, because you might not notice it, I bring to your attention, the west side of Harmony Road, if you look at the old version. So I'm talking about the southwest corner of Kelly and Harmony. If you look at the old version compared to the new version, folks, trust me, I gotta tell you, it's like night and day. I did a little ah, because I never liked that design from the day I saw. Now it's something that we can be proud of. That as Rich referred to, the streets are, it's just, if you compare the two, I would ask, please look at the two. What we have done to improve that is outstanding. You would have, I promise you, you would have been very dissatisfied had we moved forward with that plan.
And Mr. Kelly's comment, do you have a community with these lot sizes that we can look at? I just a yes or no. And if we do, yeah, where?
Well, I can, I can. And with these, the the smallest lot sizes? No, there's a reason for that. We haven't subdivided anything since two thousand and five, right? Hudson Woods would be probably the closest. You remember that, I don't need to help you. I can tell you, there's a lot of sixty five foot lots are sixty five foot lots sold out first, right? If we had forty four foot lots there, they would have sold out before the sixty five. The lots are sold last year, and there are, I'm gonna be honest, there's there's a neighborhood of ninety five foot lot lots there. Seventeen years before we finally got anybody interested even look at that, and we only because they were hugely, hugely discounted. And that's so that's that was, you know, it's a different, it was all two thousand and five, right? You know, it's a different buyer than than it is now. But even then, they were so gravitating toward those smaller lots. And I also think we just, we were just, Bartlett, we just got a plat approved in Bartlett with small lots, smaller lots. And D R Horton is working on that one. And there's a lot of excitement about that, that their interest is still early on. But the other old study, right, that's that's, we haven't started, obviously, but that was simplified lots over there as well. So I will say maybe Crown doesn't have a lot of these because we haven't developed a lot since the crash, the crash. But if you drive around, there are other communities down here with these size lots, and we can certainly give you those locations, sure.
For that Bartlett community, what was the smallest size lots in that community that you said just got approved?
They're they're sixteen.
Oh, they were sixty? Okay. But there was duplexes there as well. And there was, there's three neighborhoods, sorry, it was a sixty, sixties duplexes and what was this?
The single family was seventy. And that's, and and again, that was because of the products, you know, fits the lot and.
We have four different product types within that community. There's only three hundred and some lots.
Right, right.
I think I think that, when I'm correctly, if I'm speaking out term, I I think that the board might be a little concerned about the smallest lot sizes and becoming, I don't want to say like becoming an experiment, but you know, there's nothing like this around here.
Oh, there's things like that, just not that we have.
Okay, so but I I understand that. I think that some of some of the concern is is that we're approving the smallest lots around. And there's nothing for us to see what it actually would look like, that kind of stuff. There's a lot of benefits to this. I get it. I understand it. And I think that the board understands that the flexibility and having all all the things we talked about, trying to keep our residents here. Our planning commission was extremely supportive of this by the zero, right? So obviously, they saw some benefit in it, but I'm not, I'm not I'm not getting the feel that we're all gung ho about it. So what is it that that Crown or that Crown can do to to get us all on the same page here? Or to to show? Does that make sense? Or are we even not even into that? Into this concept? We need to have some kind of guidance here.
If I can ask a clarification then, because with the smaller lot sizes, the houses are smaller at that point. You've said ranch, you've said some of them will be two story townhouse, but for those forty four foot lots, what would be the approximate square footage of a house that's going to go on there? And is the size just a longer instead of versus a wider?
It would tend to be in depth. And square footage is average in sixteen to eighteen hundred square feet. I'll just give you in my mind, how I think of this and what it does to the community. So I grew up in Schaumburg. And my parents' first home was a fifteen hundred square foot tri-level. And it was affordable. My dad was a firefighter for thirty three years. Very involved in the community. Had there not been the opportunity for them to buy an affordable home, we wouldn't have had the fantastic experience that we had. As the community matures, then the village, and I say matures, this is over the span of, you know, two, three, four decades. Then the village, as they bring in new pieces, then they're able to actually what happened was you start getting new developments where the lots got smaller, the prices went up. And today, you go to, there's a piece of property in Schaumburg where a developer called Nitty Development purchased a piece of land from the school district. And I think those lot sizes are sixty some feet and the houses are are, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, right? And it's just sort of the maturity cycle of a community. And I think one of the ways that you help to build that maturity cycle is to attract more people to your town.
Respectfully, the community started pretty mature as far as our housing offerings. I mean, that, I mean, you
I was just speaking to your point about having a variety.
Right, but Schaumburg, the Hampshire is not apples to apples.
No, 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 no. I just, I just.
I I understand. I understand what you're attempting to do and try to get us to see the the light here, but respectfully, trying to, I feel like you're trying to guide this board in the wrong direction, or your approach is, your approach isn't working. I'm not trying to be naysore or anything like that, but I think that I think all of us up here have a pretty decent idea of community and in and know the, see the benefits. I think that there's a lot of, I'm not going to speak for the board, but there's a lot of concern with the four, the the smallest size lot. And, you know, and as and as we talked, you know, prior to presenting this plan to the board, I told you that this was going to be the biggest curve. But talking about larger communities and affordable sized homes and not preparing apples to apples, that's not helping. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, I I do, we're here, right? We want to hear what everybody, you know, standing as you can, but we the forty four foot wide lots, we didn't randomly choose forty four feet, right? It is a very specific product that national builders are having very great success with in Chicago land, in King County. And that's because you started with a product, and then the the board made it clear that seven and a half foot setbacks are key, so we had seven and a half foot, and that's how we came up with forty four feet. And again, I think it's important that you don't look at that, you look at that as an option in lieu of buying a townhome, right? You know, it's it's going to be a little more pricey, but those folks who can't afford a bigger house, a bigger lot. But would rather not live in a townhome, which is also an option here, here's an opportunity to be in a single family, be cash lot on your own other property that that maybe is affordable. That's why that's part of this mix and it's part of the diversity that we discussed before, as Chris mentioned. You know, not only for our success, but also to be able to withstand the ups and downs of this crazy industry that we're in, right? You know, and the different markets, right? I mean, the market two thousand and five, I've been here, you know, with the company for twenty four years, and just the product is completely different from what it was back then. Buyer is completely different than what it was back then. I know I said that a number of times, but it's true. You know, we got, these are millennials. It's just another option, you know.
I have some questions for you. What do you anticipate the the lowest price dwelling that might come to market when this is?
Yeah, I always have to address that because it's, but I would say
all parking.
I would say that D R Horton's current pricing is a good indication of kind of what you're going to expect going forward.
So I believe you said earlier about two eighty.
No, actually, they'll average out about two eighty. I think their current is two fifty to two eighty right now.
Yeah, two fifty to two seventy five. That's their base price. So with some options, maybe Jason could average.
Yeah, I like that a little still. I I literally like you can't wrap my head around.
Okay, well, and here, let me lay it out for you. I am a teacher. My husband is a teacher. If we did not have two incomes, we could not afford to live in any of these homes. My mom is retired just one year ago. She will be seventy two next Tuesday. She retired at seventy one. She couldn't afford this. So my question is, if I have a base townhome with a couple of options at two eighty, seven and a half percent interest as of yesterday, not today. Monthly payment with the escrow is twenty two fifty. That's twenty seven thousand dollars a year. And we know that you're supposed to budget twenty eight percent of your income. So if this is marketed to somebody who can afford that as twenty eight percent of their income, that's a starter home at ninety six thousand five hundred dollars. The base salary for a teacher in Illinois is fifty. I don't know what we pay our police and firefighters when they're starting out. I'm guessing it's somewhere between fifty, sixty ish is a good estimate. Sixty, sixty five, sixty five. They can't afford that. So to whom is this marketed? And where are our residents going to go when they can't afford ninety six thousand five hundred as their annual salary or retirement income? So I guess I understand, and I am, I applaud you for trying to find lots that will fit and homes that will fit and finding right sizes for everybody in the market and making sure that people can stay in Hampshire and move to Hampshire. That's that's a wonderful thing. But my question is, it's nice to look at, but how the heck are they going to afford that?
Who's the target?
Yeah, who is the target?
That's why we're here, right? I mean.
Because it's not.
It's, you know, I have a family of teachers, right? My wife is, my daughter is, my mother-in-law was. Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to make, we're trying to address the affordability issue, right? We can't control what what's the cost for building a home in city. It's crazy. We can't control what the Fed's doing with the interest rates. It's crazy right now. But what we can do is try to do the best we can to make these homes, you know, affordable. The way you do it is smaller lots, right, smaller homes, and try to diversify the product, right? That's exactly why we're here. I can guarantee you, I mean, if you can't if you can't afford to live in a forty four foot wide lot, you sure as heck can't live in a fifty thousand square foot.
No, and and I get that. And I, like I said, I am not upset by having smaller lots. I know my mom would probably prefer not to have as much yard to take care of as she does right now because she was alone. But I guess my concern is ninety six, five. I don't like that. And I've been in my industry for twenty six years, and I have a master's degree plus seventy. So to whom are we marketing this? Who are these people that we're asking to move to our community? And how are we going to be welcoming? So the people who are building our community.
I guess, well, what's the solution? Guess what? Wait, she's waiting for an answer, right?
I I just wanted to know who are. Because that's.
A lot more comments on this than there was before, right? We're trying to get this built for rent on this plan, right? You know, we're trying to provide as as much many options as we can, make it affordable for those in in your field, for the firefighters and police, police officers. The way you do that, you know, town, you know, I started out in townhomes, a lot of people do start townhomes, but there's a lot of, for a while, I couldn't afford, I couldn't afford a home. As an engineer, I'm a complete, we're ready, right? We're trying, we're offering that, we're offering townhomes, we're offering smaller lots, smaller homes. We're offering larger homes because there's that segment of the market mover buyer, right? You got to accommodate mover buyers as well. So we're trying to diversify and make it as affordable as possible.
Right. Good question.
Yes.
It's it's sort of sad because I think you sort of speak to the heart of what people want. Can you can you please offer us something that we can at least make an attempt to afford? And that same payment would have been three, four hundred dollars lower nine months ago.
But regardless of the interest rate, you know, the cost of building, I get it. I'm hoping to see those come down, you know, at some point.
Sorry, so so you asked a specific question. I do want to answer it. So a large portion of the people that would be coming here, some of them would look at this as an opportunity to sell their home in a town where the housing values are higher. And they, your family has gotten to a stage where they want something larger and they want to move up. And this gives the opportunity for them to bring their equity that they've poured into for the last fifteen years and transfer that equity to here.
So as follow up, when I, when we purchased our first home, I mean, we didn't even pay a hundred and fifty thousand. My wife and I, I mean, it was you know, two thousand and nine, and the house was a block closure. I mean, you could buy houses all day long for a hundred and twenty, hundred. I mean, we looked at some houses that were less than a hundred thousand, you know, even here in in the village. I mean, they were really rough shape. It was something I could move into, but I mean, like, I mean, we were started out, we didn't have two nickels to rub together, that kind of situation. And so that I guess there's not such a thing that exists any longer. I mean, when you were looking at, like, you know, even then, when we were looking, we were looking at down at Pinky Grove in the corner there at forty seven, where the houses where you walk in and you can either walk or you go down, you know, right on the corner across from from the deer dealership. And even those brand new, we could, we could have obtained for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that. There's, there's not a product out there nowadays, is there, that's in that price range?
It doesn't, it doesn't exist, but the closest thing to it, townhomes and forty foot wide lot, I mean, it's really that's what we were striving for, trying to try to make those.
My apologies for drawing a bad analogy earlier on Schaumburg. One of the things I was going to get to was my wife and I bought our first home in Lincoln Hills because that's where it was affordable thirty years ago. And our kids might look at, oh, we just have to go out another fifteen minutes or so, and we can buy a home in Hampshire because that's what we can afford. That's my apologies for the bad analogy, but that's kind of the direction where I was going.
I can piggyback on that. I worked and living in Schaumburg at the time, because that's where she was, we couldn't afford a house in Schaumburg, even down in South Elch.
And Drew can tell you this as our analyst. In Chicago, it's very, the migration patterns in Chicago are fascinating because as a population, we mostly stay within our corridors. And what I mean by that is if you live along the ninety four corridor and you want affordability, you tend to stay within your corridor going north. If if you live along the I ninety corridor, that's your comfort zone. Right? So when you're looking for affordability, you follow the ninety corridor, same with I fifty five, same with I eighty, same with, we just stay sort of there's of course exceptions, but by by far, that's how people tend to migrate.
So I have a a quick question going in line with what I think a lot of the board and President Reed were talking about, which is the variability of the types of housing within town and affordability. And President Reed, you had asked, you know, what would be potential options? It seems like there's been a lot of discussion, especially around the forty four foot lots. You know, one thing that we talked about with the recent thing that we had approved right off of Allen Road were these townhomes that are now built as rentals from the beginning, right? And so in this new proposal, I see you, you do have that included as well. That while there there are some, there is a a good increase in the regular townhomes to to purchase, you also included two hundred and sixty four of those new rental style townhomes, which is interesting. So I guess my question would be is, would Crown have any appetite to consider removing some or most of the forty four foot home sites and considering apartment complexes? Because apartments right now throughout Hampshire is something that we have, I I would think is our lowest inventory of housing type throughout the community. And I know we've talked about that before as a, as a, as a board and in different discussions. But would there be any appetite that instead of these really tiny lot houses that we take that that area without shifting around your plan? And look at the potential of apartment buildings within there, you know, a nicer apartment buildings, but apartment buildings nonetheless?
We've never been asked that question before.
Most people don't want the apartments, that's.
It does, but that's, that's like a double edged sword, right? But we talked at this board level about having places for people to go. And I'm not suggesting that, or I don't think that trustee Kelly's saying wipe all of it out and just have a ton of buildings all over the place, but you talk about affordable places to go. I mean, I don't, I don't even know if that makes sense, but.
I would seem to think that they're in too deep in the design plan to come up with all this stuff and have a firm do this to try and flip the switch now. Am I right?
We're here because it's a concept plan, right? But there's a lot of other things to consider, right? So it's, you know, we're, now's the time to make the changes. So it's, you know, we're, now's the time to make the changes. We have to consider market, right? You know, as far as, you know, as far as our request.
One thing that might be very helpful is our potential buyers are essentially three homeowners. We have, we have D R Horton, Lennar, and then the other, the third largest public builder in Chicago is Pulte Homes. But they typically mostly focus on the inner circles of the the rings, you know, sort of going out from the city. So we have yet to be able to attract them as a buyer. And then Ryan Homes, which is currently Prairie Ridge. Ryan is a good customer for us because they, they don't do any self-development. None. Whereas D R Horton and Lennar, they will buy a raw piece of land and they would develop it themselves and, you know, build homes on it. Ryan philosophically never does that. They only buy lots from a builder. But because that's how they do their, operate their business, they never buy a lot. Weird first words, they never buy in large quantity. So I I share that with you because there are a couple other builders in Chicago market like M I Homes. I actually struggle to try to remember, forgetting.
That's, that's.
Silverstone we have, which is a small private builder in Prairie Ridge as well. So our, our pool of potential buyers is like this. Where if you go, if you go back to two thousand and three, it would have been twenty-five home builders. And in other markets that we're in, if we meet with a builder and we're not the right fit, we've got twenty, thirty some other builders to go to here. If we don't give them what they want, they go away. And and we're.
It's not only that. I mean, the apartment, I'm, question is, it's a good question. Again, we've never been asked it before. The other side of that is, you know, we need to have, Chris mentioned, a street builder, right? You've got, boom, up here, right, right now, and that's true. Trying to get, we have, we're at this age because we're truly in development, so we don't do very much construction. So we're not building homes. We're not building the apartments. To try to convince an apartment developer contractor to invest up here with apartments, which require a lot of density, right? I think it's probably difficult, right? I mean, we don't do a lot of apartments, right? But I think probably the next best thing is something we do do a lot of, townhomes, build for rent townhomes. We're building it right up, right down the street right now, right? It's part of our plan right now. So that's about as close as you can get to that, that rental apartment and a better product in my view, right? It's, it's a townhome. It's bigger than an apartment. So, but I don't know, Christian might know better than I do, but I, I think we struggle to get an apartment builder out here.
Right now, there's another, I'll tell you what, I, I've, I've learned so much in this career because it's always, it's so fluid, it's always changing. Right now, normally homeownership costs and rental costs throughout the vast majority of my career worked in the inverse. Meaning when the housing market was strong, the rental market wasn't as strong. When the rental market was strong, the housing market wasn't as strong. We're in this really odd time where the cost of ownership or cost of living, not ownership, is the same whether it's rental or owning. So I can't, I couldn't even in good faith stand here and tell you that hypothetically, even if we did do apartments, that would, that would be any more affordable.
I mean, you're right.
Totally understand, but I just was trying to think outside the box a little bit.
I'm so glad you asked that because it's just a good question.
Right now, from the younger people that I've talked to and you talked about it at the last meeting, was that they don't necessarily want to buy something. They would rather be able to pick up and travel and do other things and they don't want to have that ball and chain of a house behind them. And so they're looking for something that's smaller, that they can have individually as a townhome that somebody else takes care of for them, or a smaller house with a smaller lot that isn't a lot to keep up. So I understand the concept. I'm okay with the concept for it. But, you know, I'm looking at, and we keep talking about rental and, and I see here on the bottom right of the map, the rental units, and that's the forty-four foot front, but I don't see where they're at on the big map. So where?
Chris, I'll hold it up and let you point it at her, Rich.
Well, so this would be the smaller lot detached, single family.
Okay.
It, I, I want to sort of qualify that we have some flexibility to adapt to the market.
Okay.
So for example, if some of these townhomes, maybe they're for sale or maybe they could become rentals because the zoning is the same.
But is, are there like development areas, like you pointed to the red ones up there, the pinkish ones?
These are forty fours.
Yeah.
These are forty fours.
And then that's listed as the, those are the rental areas.
And that's our, our best prediction right now.
Okay.
So, and, you know, a couple important things to your point, common maintenance, right? That's really important to these layers, right? So if you, if you will, I mean, a lot of townhomes are ready. We're trying to diversify. Yeah, we've got the folks who live in the townhomes, the common maintenance, we know the travel flexibility is really important to demographic. But imagine, you know, the next option here is more townhomes, right? To reach that, that affordability threshold that we've been talking about all night, same here, more townhomes. Well, now we're losing the diversification that we were striving to get.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
So while we've got this up, and you all probably remember this last time, but you know, we had the school site up here before.
Yeah.
And we were probably on our tenth iteration of this. When we were all looking at this and we finally said, what are we doing? Like, that's not the place for a school. So that every kid in this entire neighborhood has to traverse how many roads to get to a school? Let's move the school and put it in a place where actually kids can actually walk to school. And I, I'm a big believer that if you do the right thing, which is put the school where the homes are, that people are going to see the value in that. So that's another thing that I'm super proud of, that we, we got our, sort of our blinders up and said, let's look at this from a fresh perspective and let's put the school where it makes sense. Dan talked in the school, they said, yeah, that's a better location.
For, for you people that are new on the board, for years, and Mr. Olson's been here for years, this board has regretted smaller lot sizes. Look back at ten years ago, eight years ago, this board agreed to smaller lot sizes and they regretted it. So all I ask is just look back because this is something.
What size are you saying this year?
I don't remember. Mr. Reed might know.
So, so the biggest thing, the, the biggest thing, that the biggest fight over always was the distance between homes. So lot sizes being small was one thing, but we've never agreed to anything less than seven and a half foot, second accent sign, meaning fifteen foot, fifteen feet between.
What, what's the square, square footage on the NH area there for the forty-four foot?
Probably we're average, probably about eighty, ninety square. You think you, the point about the fifteen feet between homes. When you drive through this neighborhood, it's, you're not even going to realize that these are narrower homes because there is going to be so much space between the homes. And I think it's going to live really well. We, we were very deliberate. It's not often that I can point to a plan and, and have so many positives to point out. I mean, we, we've ribbons, you know, we have got ribbons of green space. Look at this, right, right between, how often do you see a plan where we're, let's put open space right between homes? Here, 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 hearts. I'm just sharing a little my enthusiasm for something that we're proud of, that we, we, we really try to make it different.
What, what, I'll just add to that a little bit. One of the things that's really unique about an open space plan that we have here is that the back of the lots, a lot of them do back up to open space. So you're not going to perceive that lot. You're going to perceive the open space behind you versus some of the lots that, you know, would be backing up to each other. So there's some significant open space, let's just say premiums that are built into this plan too, but I think we're, we're really excited about it as well.
To, to Trustee Coke's point about lot sizes in general, Mr. Hedges, I don't get it. I'm trying to put you on the spot. I think we did some of this work right this. I think, I think, I think the smallest lot size or the average smallest lot size of that is even the term is like around sixty feet wide in the village, like the smallest lot size we have kind of as an average.
Village wide?
Village wide. In the newer areas, I thought we looked was like, I thought we looked was like sixty, sixty, seventy or so.
I don't remember.
Well, I thought, I thought that we had talked about it because forty-four was something new to us.
In regards to that, like Sun City, what size?
I'm actually just, I'm actually looking at my own lot. I was going to share this with you. This is, as an example. I won't probably share my screen, but I'm looking at my own lot. I'm, I have forty-four feet. I have seven feet on both sides. And my, my lot is very similar to that elevation that you saw. My, my house is actually less, more narrow than my garage. And, and I paid two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for my house. I financed it at three percent. Payments are eleven hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars per month association fee. So, and I hate to say it, but now just three years later, I'd be paying seventy percent, which dramatically increased my payment. My house would now sell today for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars more than it did just two years ago. So I think what, what we're all experiencing right now is the, is the times. And keep in mind that what we're all trying to accomplish here is predict fifteen years in the future. In many cases, some of these homes won't be built for fifteen years. And if we have what many of us expect is going to be a very slow year next year because of the economy, it could be two years before this project even gets started. So I, you know, we're all trying to predict, you're all trying to predict. We did a staff and they're trying to predict what the market will want years from now. But I will say that I think these lots are very similar. Amenities very different, of course, but very similar to what you see in Del Webb. You can't find a house behind a Del Webb. They sell the first thing.
Mr. Hedges, that pretty much describes what they're, they're looking at for their concept with forty-four, forty-four foot lots. Is, is exactly, you said two sixty-ish or so, and they're saying about two eighty is what they're anticipating, but that's in about two years.
This is new product. It's very minus fifteen years.
If, if I could just ask then, is in your neighborhood area, and I know that's a different type of a development, but the size is right there. Are there a lot of vacancies?
None.
No.
Not one.
But along with that, you get free access to the clubhouse.
No, I pay for it.
What about the golf course? All through the HOA?
Yeah.
No, no, I don't. The golf course has nothing to do with us. It's purely.
The woodworking shops and all that stuff?
Those things you pay when you join. Yeah, those are all the gift. The only things that are free really are the lakes. You get to walk around the paths. It even costs money to run the test.
That's why I was asking about everything else.
Yeah, right. I want to make a comment here. Yeah, I, I've been in Hampshire since two thousand and two. My first house built it was thirty-four hundred square feet. Last four years, we downsized to twenty-six hundred square feet. And we're looking at downsizing again because we don't have, there's only two of us in the house and the cost of everything at the moment is like this. We're going to, we need to downsize because we can't do the maintenance and stuff. You know, we're looking to the people here. So we're looking for something that this, this calls for us. And we've been saying to ourselves for quite a while, what are we going to do? Because there's nothing here in Hampshire that really attracts us in with something like this. Regardless of the cost, because we've looked at Sun City, we've looked at a lot of other places. And I would say I've been a realtor for, I, I came in and the crash. So I've worked my way up through that. So I've seen the cost of housing then and now today. Even looked recently at properties in Sun City, three hundred and fifty thousand, eighteen hundred square feet, sixteen hundred square feet. So we looked at a lot of different sized properties to get in the size that we're looking for. There's only two of us, so we don't have a family. We don't have kids. We want to be around our kids that are in the area. And so we, we've been looking and saying to ourselves for several years, what's going to keep us here in Hampshire? And I think something like this development here with what it's offering is something that would, that would interest us to, would need, meets our requirement. We, we don't feel it's been here before. So I was very excited when I saw this plan. And they're saying, okay, this is offering something that wasn't offered to, offered to us before, it's future, but it's there. It's going to be there, something like that. The cost of housing is going to go up no matter what we do. It's not going to drop down. It's like your electricity and utility costs, they're never coming down. So that's, that's relative. Because, you know, you're both going, we're, we're both going to be totally retired very shortly. And how are we going to afford these four hundred thousand or whatever size homes? So we're looking at this whole thing from hand this key this here. And to me, a project like this, not saying that this is the exact project, but something like this is, is going to interest us. Moving into apartment, no way on this earth would I move into an apartment. So I'm not an apartment, but some people are, I'm not.
Thank you, Mrs. That's, and I think, Trustee Kelly asked earlier, you know, provide examples, and I keep going, we're going to, you know, we don't, we haven't dealt in a while, but it is obvious right at the street, Jay's subdivision, right? You know, forty, forty-four foot wide lots, that's a little proposing here. I would say the difference between Jay's subdivision and this, this has a two-story option, right? For those first time buyers who may be wanting to start. The other question I'd ask, you know, in those, those areas in red, which is what we're talking about here. If not, the forty-four foot wide lots and lots, more townhomes, we already got a lot of townhomes, right? Sixty foot wide lots, we got a lot of those, right? We're trying, again, to do the diversification. So that's why the forty-four are there. And again, it's based on a product that is very popular in the market in Chicago, in the King County area today. Can we show you this product? It works. So, and that's what the buyers like. And yes, most importantly, your point, trust me, it's the affordability issue, it's the downsizing issue, it's the first time buyer issue. That's why we're going to, you know, those, all of those people who don't live in townhomes, there's not a possibility for you to go in a single family lot with town maintenance. Right?
And I just want to jump in too, because I have relatives, which I was shocked, that lived in Chicago that are retiring and then tell me they're looking in Hampshire. And I kind of did a double take and because the fact was, you have ranches here and some of them were just too big. So they're looking for that smaller ranch on one level because they're retiring. The option of a basement, I don't know if that's one of the options and stuff in there, is more for storage than anything else. But to hear people from Chicago that they're targeting Hampshire just kind of threw me, but, you know, widow, you know, single in their late sixties and that's what they're looking for. They're also, the second thing, which is for older people as well as younger, is the safety issue. They don't want to stay in Chicago anymore because it's not as safe, but to come out to a community like this, that's what they're looking for. So again, I'm okay with that concept of the size and they're smaller areas. If you have an HOA, which all of this will be in one HOA, and then you said last week or last meeting that some of them will be additional HOAs for townhouses or, you know, in there. But within those HOAs, like, so we've got some that are rental areas. Can they go back in and say, we're not going to be rental areas anymore and switch that? So that's one question. The other one is, is about the rental area. Because I know with a lot of those smaller, the townhouses areas, a lot of people buy them up and then rent them out. And that's not as preferred for those people that buy. And so I'm just throwing that out there.
Lots of great comments and questions in there. The first is to your point, HOAs are an excellent way to ensure that the, the maintenance of the community. You know, everything from you can't have a certain type of sign in your yard if it's too big or too, you know, it's pink or whatever. But to the maintenance of the home itself, there are mechanisms within that process to help to ensure that aesthetics are cute. And.
Rental or taking out the rental.
Yeah. So we know from experience now that we would make sure we have a mechanism in place that if. that if one of these that's, that's projected to be, uh, uh, built for rent soon enough, that they're, that it became the, the mechanism by which you would have to go into an HOA.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we could ensure that.
Are those, are all of the rental areas, are the, are they all townhouses or are there houses that are included in that too?
That's, that's what we're talking about. So everything you see here in the brown.
Those are townhouses.
Townhouses, right? So what you see here in red, which is what we opened for discussion, I think is a forty-four foot wide lot.
Okay.
Built for rent. So it's a single-family detached product.
Okay.
Seven and a half side, uh, side yards.
Okay.
Between each home, but it's built for rent, right? Which is a really popular product right now.
And then that's the part across the street, that N through F area at the top?
Four of them.
And through H is what is that pink and then the N through F at the top, that, that area, that, those are townhouses that are rental?
Well, I, we don't know for sure if they'll be rental, right? Cause it's like, I mean, it could be wrong, but I can hope that they will be. Uh, part of the building, townhome product right now in our community and your community, one is built for rent. Will we build for rent or is?
So that's what I'm trying to understand and maybe hear then. So, so these are the townhouses across the way and those are possibly rent?
Could, could.
Or could be, but this side of the street then, those are the ones that are rental. Cause of paint and, and that's what I'm confused.
All rental.
All rental.
Or sale, or sale, or sale.
Okay, so.
Anticipating.
Anticipating.
Okay, but wait, cause you should, this one is all gray, this one's all gray, this one's mixed.
Yeah, this one's mixed.
Oh, it's not by color.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, all right, all right, all right.
Color is only to differentiate product type.
Product type, yeah.
Okay, then. So these are the townhouses and these are the, the single-family smaller houses. Okay.
So to, to answer, clarification. The majority of the forty-four foot wide lots is Crown's intention at this time to be built for rent?
You know, I would have.
I would have to say it's a fifty-fifty likelihood because we just, we want to, for everybody's sake, we want to be able to be adaptable to the market.
Sure.
So the smaller family wants to start out and they don't want to rent. They can still have that smaller area, but still have their own house instead of being part of town.
No, I, it's just a little tidbit about myself. In the town I live in, I serve on the zoning and planning board. So I want to assure you that I also look at everything you do through that lens. Cause I'm you, I'm asking you questions.
Also, to answer your question, we want this, because we're, we're going to react to the market, but it may be similar to sort of built for rent versus home. Similar to what we're doing right now, right? You know, it, you know, one of the neighborhoods and the townhomes are built for rent. Like I said, one is, is, is owned. It could be some of these townhomes, one, some blocks of these townhomes are built for rent. Maybe that one over there is owned. Same thing with the forty-four. Is that it? Or is, is, it's, it's again dictated by on market.
Um, my other question then is, is the active adult versus the single-family areas? Because they, they fit in and from the questions last time, active adult is not senior, it's not fifty-five and older, it could be. So I'm not sure what makes you an active adult if it doesn't have anything to do with having kids in the house or age.
Yeah, you have to be adult.
Okay, you have to get adults. All right.
So by the, by the nature of the lot design.
Okay.
It's intended for single-story homes.
Okay.
Um, and active adult has sort of become a term that can, it can describe something that's age restricted. We have to be fifty-five or better, like Huntley.
Mm-hmm.
Or it can mean something that's designed to attract, um, either like an empty nester. Like you could be forty-eight years old, your kids are out of the house and you want to live in a single-story home, but you don't qualify yet for Sunset Huntley.
Mm-hmm.
Also there, it's interesting, as humans are so, we're so different, right? Like some of us want to live in a community where I'm only around people that are fifty-five and above. Some of us want to live in a single-story home, but be around all different types of people. So we have, we provide options for both, right? And that's what this does. This is more service, serving the people who aren't fifty-five, yet they could be, they might be, but if they're not, that's okay. They can live here. The other thing that I like personally is it serves people who might have limited physical means and they don't want to live, they can't live in a two-story home.
Mm-hmm.
They have actually an option now to live in a single-story home that accommodates their needs. Where do you go for that?
So all the active adult areas, I mean, all of those sections are all single-story in the active adults?
That's, that's, that's what I mean.
They're designed for single-story ranches, right? Now, an interesting phenomenon that's happened in the last couple of years is, um, some builders will offer an option for like a guest bedroom upstairs. So when the kids come over, they've got two bedrooms and a den on the main floor, they're set. They don't have to get that option if they don't want to.
Mm-hmm.
If they want a space for when family comes over, they can buy that option where there's a bedroom and a bath upstairs and maybe some storage.
So there's a really good example that's right down the street in the Harmony Way's community. We have one neighborhood and you'll notice that because you drive through it, they all have type, single-story ranches. Some of them have upstairs or not, uh, but they're all ranches, right? You drive through and they have models open, you can tour. But we've got, sure, there's a lot of fifty-five and older buyers living in that area, but there's also person that buys. Wouldn't live single-story living, right? You know, and there's those folks that have to because of some disabilities, uh, D or C's, right? There's, so it's, it's not restricted to fifty-five and older. I would say that's predominantly the buyer in those areas, but it's open to all.
Yes.
Just geared toward that.
There's one other thing that helps to, to make sure that it's predominantly fifty-five and older is there's a, a mowing service that mows all the lawns, this common area maintenance. So unlike with you own a home, you own, you mow your own lawn, but in this community or this pod, the lawn is mowed for you. So that's a separate fee and most keep, that will detract from regular, uh, folks who don't want to pay that extra HOA fee for that maintenance. So you're, you're going into that community and you get a certain purpose of the, all those salespeople are selling, uh, one-story living homes predominantly. So your options are limited. You have an H, separate HOA fee that maintains the area for you. And that's the biggest sort of detractor from, from, from those areas. It attracts the people that are fifty-five.
There was an active adult before, just to run it that, the active adult area then, the maintenance is included?
Yes, you don't have to mow your lawn. Well, not, not only do you not have to, you can't.
You can't, you know.
Right, that's what you're going to look for, right?
Doing his lawn. I mean, that's why it's an option and they like that.
Right, and somebody's coming through and doing all of it, they're going to do all the pesticides, it's going to look great. Just like a townhome.
I just have one final question. You know, we kept you here waiting too long.
No, we appreciate.
Is there a, a, a ground here that will be a future fire station? Is there a little piece there?
So as, 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 it's on the corner of Harmony and, um, that little rectangle up there in the corner. It's, that'll actually be stationed through some.
All right, just making sure.
That was needed by us, um, in two thousand and five, yes.
Okay.
So, um.
One last question. What was the, their bottom square foot in that area?
Active adult.
Again, uh, what we see the market demand for is anything from thirteen hundred square feet to twenty-two hundred square feet. Yeah, so what, um.
I, I kind of want to wrap this up unless, you know, we have some more questions, which is fine. I just, we need to give, we, we are not taking a vote, but we need to, we need to provide some guidance. Okay, so I don't know, the easiest way to do this would be as a pre-work or vote trustee by trustee, it doesn't matter. But how, how would you like to provide some guidance to Brown about this plan? Whether we are or against their, their next step in engineering? Or they present a formal plan to come before us again?
I'll help. Within ninety seconds, what's your one plus and your one thing that you would recommend reading to me?
Okay.
Sounds like.
Perfect.
Is that working? In the interest of time and variety.
Who wants to go first?
Guys, go ahead, um.
I, I like the mix, um, of houses. I know a lot of people are not fans of smaller lot sizes, but there's a whole lot of people who can't manage. They can care of that. I like it. Um, my biggest concern that I would like you to consider is, um, probably, again, I know the affordability piece is not really under your control, but making sure that we're attracting a range of incomes as well.
Absolutely.
So.
Who goes next?
I can pretty much echo those same things. I do like the, uh, the variety. Personally, I'm not a fan of the small lot sizes, but I was just looking up a few areas that have these small lot sizes and you can't buy one right now because everybody wants them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was looking at, what's the name of it right there? I don't know.
Townsend.
Um, whoops.
No, it's called Townsend and it's.
Providence.
In Providence, but it's.
It's, it's west of, west of Vessel Road, there's.
Providence.
There's a couple of some of them. Narrow lots, the homes take, and you can't buy one.
Okay.
Okay, you can't buy.
That's a pack.
You can buy two out of the two hundred homes in there for two seventy-five if you wanted. Um, so that would be mine, but that's me personally. Like I'm not of that generation. I don't want a forty-four foot wide lot. I want, I want, well, myself, but I understand that's where the market is. Um, and this is probably down the line and I know this is more of a county issue, but my biggest concern is going to be when we get there, that school and those kids having to cross Harmony Road without a stoplight.
Well, that'll, once we get to that point, that would be a discussion for sure.
Yes, yes.
We will be doing practice studies.
Right, I, I understand.
Not in COVID times, like the last one.
No.
Thank you.
But that was my biggest concern with the last development and that's going to be my biggest concern in the end of this.
Trustee Coates, there, you, you want to go?
I don't like the lot sizes. I will vote no against the smaller lot sizes. Other than that, it's a great, great product, uh, good mix. Um, but I, I think the lot size is forty-four.
What's your minimum, I suppose?
I'll give, the forty-four foot doesn't, doesn't work for me. It just doesn't.
If I may just.
And, and they're, and the reason, you know, uh, you've mentioned several times during your presentation, first time buyers.
Right.
First time buyers kind of, according to her math, have to have a, a, a net income of ninety-six, five a year to afford. So, uh, it, it, it concerned me when she asked who the buyer is. And we had asked her three times to get that answer. Your houses aren't going to start for three or four years. So that ninety-six, five is out the window because the cost of building is going to go up. Your cost of lumber is going up, your cost of the actual home is going to go up. Even though the land might not, your sewer water is not going to go up, your gravel's not going up. Cement will grow, go up a little bit, but the actual wood and the internal parts, stoves, ovens, that'll all go up. So in those two or three years, that two hundred and eighty thousand is now going to be three and a quarter. So now it takes that ninety-six, five a year that you need to support a two eighty and it's going to drive us further.
And just, just to clarify, it's, it's just a forty-four foot wide.
Yep.
That you're concerned about?
Yep.
I'm thinking, uh, yeah, I, I've already voiced how that would affect me as an individual. And, uh, like I said, I'm, I, I think the concept is great to see that something like this is being planned for me. So it's, because I think as I said in the past, we love providing this for the people here that be here a long time and maybe doing, uh, this move. Which is not here, so that would be pretty good, but I think for future, I think this whole team, everybody would go. Came here, constant, and never going to go down. Remember we grew before we even came to Ann Arbor? And cost of housing in, uh, Sun City was from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. Now we're over three hundred thousand, well over three hundred thousand. And even in Hampshire, we're working at much higher prices for bigger companies here. So this to me is a never-ending cycle. I've seen it, having been in real estate since two thousand and eight, I've seen all these changes, keep moving. And then they're not going to stop, they're not going to go backwards. And regardless of what we have as income, it's still, still going to be, that problem is still going to remain. So just me, the concept, yeah, I think is a great idea.
Can I, uh, not to say out to you trustee Paulistry, but I kind of ignored the fact that trustee Kelly is, is, is virtual. Can we get his evidence?
Absolutely.
Trustee Kelly?
No, I'll wait. Go ahead trustee Paulistry. I figured you were just going in order. No offense taken.
Um, I have already said it. I like the concept. I like the different uses. I'm okay with the forty-four foot size because of the concept of the house and what the market is, is looking for. Um, I, um, no, I, what would kind of, still kind of bothers me and you can't do anything about it is that, that center gray area, which is a farm field, which is in the middle of it, which separates the signs, you know? So I, I, my note was stepchild. This is, the stepchild is the part on the north. Cause it appears that everything's going to kind of start on the south. I don't see you starting up with one there and then going down. So it, it feels like it's going to be a stepchild of the whole concept. Um, but I, I do understand it's land that's bought and you're going to develop different areas, but I see that kind of as a stepchild. And then the same thing with that mixed townhouse areas, which is all by itself on the opposite side of the street. But I do understand you're kind of tied in by farms.
Yeah.
So, but that's, those are.
Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, um, first, I just want to thank, thank you all for, for spending two nights with us and two very long discussions. So I do appreciate it and it does show your dedication to, to find a, a good resolution in this process. So thank you for that. Um, but I, I like the mix of types from townhomes to the, I think the rental townhome is a really interesting thing. And, and I'm actually okay with the reduction in lot size down to the seventy-one and the sixty-sixes that you have. I do have a real problem with the forty-fours and, and I would agree with, uh, with some of the sentiment tonight that was, that was said that, you know, I, I would have a hard time voting for forty-four foot lots. And I was, I was taken aback a little bit earlier in the discussion because a lot of the discussion around this has been that the forty-four foot lots present, uh, affordable, affordable-ish, let's say, housing as much as can be in this development. Um, and yet there was a discussion where there would be a portion of these that could be built to rent in a similar fashion of the townhomes, which then kind of defeats the purpose of, these are the affordable homes for people to buy. So I just, for me, the hangup I'm having right now is the forty-four foot wide, uh, homes, the, the sixty-six foot wide, the seventy-one foot wide. I think your layout and the open spaces is great. Uh, the forty-four, forty-four foot wide, I, I have a big problem with. And then I, I just want to echo, um, trustee Robinson. We absolutely have to have a resolution and something figured out in the plan about a crossing system at Harmony Road. Uh, and that main thoroughfare, especially if you're looking to increase the number of homes within that development.
Thank you. Uh, so you knew where I was with the forty-four foot lots when they were first presented. I told you that was going to be your biggest hurdle. Um, there's part of me that is, that still has concerns with the forty-four foot lots. But again, market dictates and trustee Robinson's others and, and, and Mr. Hedges, right, uh, they're out there, right? I understand that. That doesn't mean I don't like them. And, and just kind of, that's where I'm at. I'm concerned about the crossing, but I understand that I'm also very understanding of the fact that that's a Kelly, uh, not Kelly, a county road. Uh, so we're going to go through similar steps at that point if we had to do up a legal crossing and that kind of stuff. Overall, I, I think positive business is about, I think, thanks. But I am concerned about, concerned about the forty-four foot lots. I've said that I've been concerned about it at the very beginning. I'm still concerned about it only for the fact that, you know, we're trying to try something new. We're trying to do this for our community and I get that, but the trustee Coates' point, one of the first things he said is, is, you know, this board has been very cognizant of trying not to create messes that other people are going to have to clean up. And we tried really hard not to set precedent that somebody else is going to have to deal with later. Introducing a forty-four foot lot is something that we haven't done before. And if we open the door, I fear that it might be standard practice in the future. Uh, again, you're not doing anything wrong. You're not, I'm not accusing you of being the bad guys. I'm not. I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, when we went from seventy, hundred to seventy-five to sixty to, you know, it used to be ten-foot setbacks and all this, and now we're down to seven and a half and it keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. And I think that it's just something that this board has been very cognizant of in every decision that we. It's just something that this board has been very cognizant of in every decision that we've ever made, is trying not to create precedent or something that somebody else is gonna have to stick with. Because we've been cleaning up a lot of, I don't wanna say messes, but we've been cleaning up a lot of things that are on. Um, not unnoticed, but unattended to in our time here, and, and I don't wanna give that to somebody else. But I appreciate you coming time and time again. I appreciate your dedication to the village. You guys have been a great partner with us. I hope you don't label your sales, but we did. Because we had some original things to say.
We certainly don't, and actually this one way better than I think we all expected. I mean, this is what we hoped for. We need feedback before we start going to the 100, but we've got them tonight and it's very candid feedback, and thank you so much for that. Um, this gives us, I think, pretty clear direction. We'll discuss it. We may come back with the same type of plan. We may come back with a different plan, but I think we got good enough direction, at least if you're going on culinary engineering. I would, my only suggestion to you is if, you know, there's a lot of discussion on 44 foot wide lots tonight, if you have concerns about that, I'd like to invite you all to Jay's house.
Pretty good setup for the fair scheme.
Do you have a lot of alcohol?
That could be arranged. He's gonna need it if we all show up at his. Your lawn chairs, because it's his garage, in our lawn chairs.
And well, I would suggest, um, that you, you do run through that community though, because it is close by, see what 44 foot looks like, right? Um, and, you know, that would be my suggestion, and I, I am embarrassed I didn't think of it before, but it started at the street.
I do apologize. Which community is that again? I, I couldn't hear, sorry.
Jay's house.
Oh, in Sun City. Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I also just wanna say how appreciative we are of your time. Couple. I, I'm just food for thought. Berry Ridge, we, we too are earnestly trying to position it for to be a thriving community into the future. Um, it has been somewhat of an 18 year study on the market. And we're finally trying to address. Issues there at the core. I follow probably four housing economists, uh, every day. And, um. But many of them believe that, you know, this, this interest rate cycle that we're in, i- it's a cycle, right? And for whatever period of time that lasts, for those folks that are in a home that have a 3% interest rate. They're not going anywhere. They're not going anywhere. So what we're presenting here, it might be for some people, the only alternative. We are at an all time low of inventory, the supply of resale homes in the entire Chicago line market and in the country. People aren't gonna put their homes on the market unless they absolutely have to. Thank you so much.
And thank you again. Safe travels home.
It's funny you mention that. It's funny you mention that because we had a lot of discussion about how to name these neighborhoods. They were, at first it was all, it was neighborhood G, neighborhood, the word neighborhood, you can see. Thank you all again. We appreciate it.
All right, I will ask at this time, does anybody need a five minute break? We've been sitting here a long time. I realize that it's almost nine o'clock. We don't wanna stay here with. It's up to you guys. If you wanna take some business to stand up and stretch the leg, or we can continue it. If you need to stand up, you can do that anyway. You don't need to stay and die as I don't care. Okay, all right, let's, let's continue.
If you question that, we would ask for reconsideration. We would ask for a motion to accept a municipal compliance report fiscal year 2022. Give an agenda supplement from. Finance director Lyons, any questions regarding this, is the police passion fund?
I have a question. Our actual investment return was 0.07%.
Correct.
I got more than that on a CD.
So, um. Uh, we have an investment advisor on the pension board and unfortunately, back when the pension was, when the pension was created. Um, the village was, the trustees were unable to secure fiduciary, uh. Insurance to protect them from making good or bad investments. It's some type of fiduciary insurance. I apologize, then the name is slipping me. So, um, at the advice of the advisor, um, on the board. They kept all of their money in cash and so were earning, um, very little interest. But they were protected from not making poor investments and the state statutes actually speak to what you can invest in. And so, um, had they hired, um, uh, an advisor, an investment advisor. He felt that the fees would exceed the interest that was being received, so, um, if you're concerned about that on the positive side. Um, the pension board did vote to send 2.6 million dollars to IPOP, which is the consolidated fund that is, um.
In Springfield.
Yeah, in Springfield.
And how much do they keep here?
Um, once the, once the village has made their contribution for 2022, there will be approximately 1.2 million dollars still.
And when will all of it shift to Springfield, where we're gonna have an actuary that actually is investing in the market? And, and, and have a better return?
Um, I can't answer. I, I mean, we do not have a projected date for when all the money goes down.
Okay.
Um, so the pension fund being all in cash did not have technically any required transferable assets. So they did delay, um, you know, the, the transmission of this money for a short period of time. But they understand that it needs to get down there and get invested in the giant pool, which allows them all sorts of, um, varied investments.
So at the top of page two on 30, uh, or, yeah, page two, also page 31, our net income received. For the current fiscal year is two grand?
Um, in interest income. This was for the period ending, um, April 30th, 2022, so.
It, it's still horrible.
It is.
No matter what.
Yeah.
And does the village have any stroke to making the pension board move it all down there sooner rather than later?
No.
Okay.
It's a separate.
If I could jump on trustee Coates' question about the interest, on, on page, I guess 30 is for the palette. And, and number two is lists investment earnings and it shows 168,800. And that's what confused me with the 0.07 that trustee Coate pointed out.
This would be the estimated receipts for the succeeding fiscal year.
So that's for next, for, well, the one that we're in right now, they're expecting.
So that's not gonna happen either, so, right.
If that doesn't happen, then the village has to pick up the rest of it.
That's accurate.
Okay, so we're going from 2,000 to 168,000 for the anticipation?
So, um, over the course of time, the actuary takes all of the, um, you know, all of their figures, so your, your role, your participants. It takes the amount of money that's in the fund, it takes expected investment, um, earnings and then calculates these contributions, so. Um, yes, we will be, we're, we're in a makeup situation, if you will, because our investment earnings have not met expectations.
Okay, okay, so then in the next, we're in the middle of it, but 12 months, it's anticipated that 168K is.
So, so leaving close to that? No, it won't be close to that, so, I mean, I, obviously interest rates have gone up. Uh, but the stock market is all over the place, so if you look at the, uh, results of IPOP, um. So, some of, uh, my treasure friends, if you will, are at municipalities that have transferred, you know, um, their assets. Honestly, in the last quarter, they lost, so, you know, I mean, it's gonna, what, it's, what's gonna concern you is not only are we not making 168, but maybe we lost 100,000 dollars. So all of that factors into what's, what comes up the next year, absolutely.
But this is in, mostly cash. They're not invested in the stock market. They're not invested in.
Not currently, but our expectation is when the 2.6 million dollars gets down there, it will.
Then it will be, okay.
You'd think they'd at least get a, a, a CD.
Yeah.
That's just bizarre.
Is there, is that, I mean, you're, you're comfortable with the strategy? Investment strategy? I mean, is there not something that we should be doing differently?
But that's not my decision.
Is the fiduciary answer to a money manager?
They will, yes.
They don't currently.
The fiduciary, the pension board has, does not have a money manager, does not have a fiduciary.
So we do have an open spot on the, no, right? Yes? Yeah, we do have an open spot on the pension board. If anybody has any thoughts?
So when the, when the investments go down to the state, though, the, the investment, um, choices are taken away from the board. That's all done by the big funds.
And the big funds get to invest in whatever they decide on, but we can invest, we, we keep cash.
Well, there's a reason for that, too.
I understand, I understand.
No, I, I just, maybe, maybe, there's a reason that we have so much cash and not investments, correct? Not invested as much?
We can only invest in certain vehicles, evidently not many.
But I mean, I, I'm trying to learn through the process. I'm not questioning it. I'm just trying to.
So, so there was a limitation until you reached, I believe it was 2.5 million dollars, um, in total fund assets. That you could only, uh, invest 10% in equities. So again, they didn't wanna make a poor equity decision and have somebody can, come back and say, you know, you invested in a, in a, in a bad stock. Um, because they did not have any type of liability insurance to cover them either personally or as a trustee of their board.
It's a serious, it's called prudent person, prudent man law, prudent person, I think it'd be more appropriate these days. Uh, but it does say that your pension investments must be, um, protected and they must be, the returns must be consistent with the risk. And if, if an individual like this, who's a volunteer really, who's appointed and not paid for what they're doing, enormous risk for them if they, they make a mistake. And so many challenges, especially if they can't insure the insurance that we mentioned. So I think that's why these funds are all being taken in Springfield, because there's so much more.
And we don't have a date as to when all of that's gonna happen. I know that we've talked about it now for two or three years, right?
That's entirely, that's entirely up to Springfield. At least our board's got two thirds of the money down there already.
It's, it's in the process of getting.
Yeah, no, I know it's up to Springfield. I'm just saying that, I, I, I fully understand, but what I'm saying is that Springfield hasn't made any. Given any idea, indication as to when they'd like all the funds down there?
Uh, so keeping some funds locally is appropriate.
Okay.
Obviously, um, right now, our pension obligation on a monthly basis. Uh, we're, we're taking in less from our contributing officers at the present time than we're sending out to the beneficiaries, um, that are retired. So obviously we need to save some cash here. Uh, there also is a pending disability claim that, um. Once the board feels more comfortable keeping more cash until that is, um, adjudicated, if you will, to figure out what, you know, what will happen on that.
You, you know, when Springfield is gonna take the money, do you have any, any indication?
They will not, they will not come and grab the money.
They won't ever do that.
I, I know.
Well, supposedly, right?
So then the other question is.
It's up to our board when they send the rest of it down.
When we send our money down there, uh, and they actually are investing in stuff that actually brings return back. Does that mean that our, uh. The money that we have to contribute will decrease as our interest and income increases from the investment?
Again, they evaluate that every single year. Um, so it's a, it's a, um, if you recall, we had a couple of laterals leave the police board. We have hired laterals in, um, as a more experienced police officer with additional, uh, years of experience. Less time between entry in our pension fund and retirement, so, you know, you have to look at, everything changes every single year. So, um, obviously getting more investment income will certainly assist the, um, the village.
I appreciate the report, and again, we're not, I don't, we're not questioning you or accusing you. You guys are, you were the board of doing the wrong thing. We're just trying to learn through the process.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding the report?
Yes, we don't accept it.
That's a good question.
I mean, it's like a perfunctory thing, it seems to be, but.
So it's, this is like a checkmark in the box, right? The, I mean, if you don't accept it, that's fine. Uh, uh, the, the pension board is obligated by state statute to provide you with a, um. A list, or provide you with a report of the condition of the fund and what is required for the levy. Um, as you know, the village cannot levy for police pension purposes without going out to referendum, because it would be a new line item and you can't just add a line item. So in this case, it is, um, it's completely a checkmark box that they have followed through on their obligation.
Okay.
Um, and, and in this case, um. We will use this for a guideline for budgeting purposes, but that's all it is, because, you know, we really don't have the ability, you do not have the ability to levy for this purpose.
So this motion is not to approve the report, it's just to.
It's to accept it.
That's it.
That's what I think it's.
And keep in mind that the term compliance just means, it means the guidelines, you know, funds are well invested, I think.
Okay.
It's not judging that.
Okay.
I undertake a motion to accept municipal compliance report for the fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Fodor. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coate.
No.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paustini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
I, I explain.
Okay, now it's time for the monthly reports. Thank you, Mr. Hedges. I'm in your bag and you will see the monthly billing report and the monthly street report. Anybody has any questions or anything they would like to add? Now would be the time to do so. Mr. Coate, would you like to add anything about streets?
Nope.
Mr. Ray, would you like to add anything about your billing report, or should we grade it on its merit?
I'd just like to point out that the average plan review time is down to 1.3 days this month, which is really excellent. They fired some additional staff and, and the new staff doing pretty well on the plan review inspection side.
Should be 1.2, but we'll set a rule.
I'll do better.
You said they've hired. I heard they've fired.
They said hired.
Yes, and I understood that after you continued.
They fired a lot of bad staff, and I'm just kidding.
Anybody have any questions for the billing reports or street reports?
I just wanna thank the street department for all the patches that they're working on in the asphalt. They're very much appreciated.
You can tell that they're, that they realize that the weather's changing because they're running around like crazy, getting ready for winter, and they're doing a great job. All right, next we have accounts payable. First accounts payable, uh, for Ms. Shawna Davis. In the amount of $192.75. Does anybody have any questions about her expenditure? Very none. I will undertake a motion to approve said expense.
So.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Paustini.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coate.
Aye.
Motion to pass six zero.
Okay, now the big one. Ms. Paustini.
Just one. That's it.
You noticed that I didn't even look at her?
No, he didn't even. I didn't even look up to acknowledge you either. Um, page 47, I just, um, read telecommunications. I just didn't. I don't remember that, but it's my street.
They work on, they work on the alarm, the tornado alarms.
Ah, sorry. Okay, because it was by all the different streets and I didn't know what that was.
So there's yearly maintenance and we call them if there's a problem.
That's it, that's all. Just clarification.
Any other questions? I will undertake a motion to approve the regular accounts payable in the amount of $120,841.15 to be paid on a report November 9, 2022. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Paustini.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion to pass six zero.
Mr. Kelly, we are all, we anxiously waiting to hear all about the business development commission.
We will be meeting next week at our regularly scheduled time and place. See you all there.
Can we go back to, um, Laura's question, sorry, Ms. Paustini's question about granite? We thought you said granite.
That's what I thought she said.
Yeah, so granite is.
She said granite.
Is that someone that you use?
Yeah, it's granite.
All right.
So that is. I said page forty seven, the village is telephone provider, so it would be like AT&T, but not A N T T, it's granite. They provide the telephone. Lots.
For each one of them.
Uh huh.
Sorry. I heard granite. But now you know who works on our tornado services.
Yeah, I do, so there's, there's. That's not in there all the time, is it?
So we just changed their.
Okay, that's why, I didn't understand.
It's been in there before, it's just, it's not, it it is relatively new.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you guys didn't notice, Ms. Lyons gave me the timeout symbol.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly, sorry for taking the end of your report.
No, just to clarify too, for those that may not know what I meant by regular scheduled time and location, next Wednesday, six thirty at Village Hall.
Mr. Coath was planning on joining and he wasn't, he didn't know. Ms. Fodor.
I'm glad you're able to join now, Trusty Coath.
Here you go. Feel free to join us on Thursday next week at six thirty P M right here at Village Hall for the next P R committee meeting. However, that is the extent of my report, as I would like to turn it over to either Trusty Matt or Trusty Kelly. Since I was not here for the last one, would you like to add anything from our previous meeting?
We did the last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, and also thank you to Mr. Rosetti, because our newsletter is fantastic, it arrived in my mail today. So please check it out if you didn't get it yet.
You see any mail I sent you today? Just do a quarter?
Nope, haven't been home yet.
I would like to let you know that one of our residents paid their water bill, but they knew my Hampshire app. And he was thrilled, sent a meeting off, came very forward and.
Download, download the app.
We're up to forty downloads.
Our new app was released today. Download our app, it's live, there's a lot of neat things you could do with it. The biggest thing I can tell you is everybody always asks, how do we know if? How do we know if, right? So you download the app, you enable the notifications and if there is an if and we need to tell you, we will push out notifications through the app. Mostly like emergency communications, street closure, water main breaks, that kind of thing. If you live near Huntley and get Nixle, it's the gates malfunction, which seems to be all they use Nixle for in Huntley. We will tell you through the app, so please download the app.
And if a resident is out and they see a tree down or something strange, they can take a picture of it, upload it to the app, send it immediately and it goes directly to DayStare.
You will notice, you will notice my, my standard canned comment will be downloading my Hampshire app and report this.
Yeah, thank you.
That will be it, if you see something on Facebook.
So if there's a street light out, don't call it down.
Right. Download the app and report it, because you.
I just want to say one last thing, because I thought it was so important, I shared with our staff that the staff meeting on Wednesday. And that is that I've been reading a lot about community interaction and civic engagement. And eighty percent of residents just want to be able to interact with the village like ordering a pizza. And it's all about them coming to us, they're not, eighty percent of people don't really care what we send them electronically or in the mail or any other way. They want to be able to interact with us transactionally like they order a pizza. So I think now we can, you can pay your water bill as easy as you can order a pizza.
We gotta get it.
Can I ask a favor of our our webmaster general over there?
Yes, sir.
Can you do me a favor and make sure that the older, older issues of the newsletter and this current one get uploaded to the newsletter section?
Sure.
It's something I used to do and I've been not doing it very well. So if you could just check my work and make sure that it gets up here, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Can this app push out notifications for garbage day?
Um, if it gets, if it, no, seriously, if it gets delayed and we're going to delay, that's an excellent use of the app. If garbage is going to be delayed due to a holiday, that's an excellent use of said app.
We actually added a report your garbage problem to our reporting list this week.
Well, no, it's so much so like, okay.
Both directions.
Yeah, so if there's a holiday or there's something, or we've had it where it's been really cold in the past and they've had to move it up a day or something like that, that'd be an excellent way to report that.
Now we need to go from forty to three thousand users.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna be pushing it big time. I wanted it to start hitting the mailboxes before we hit it with the social campaign. Okay. Uh, Public Works, Mr. Coath.
Your report was in your package, any questions, let me know if not. Let me know.
Ms. Paul Street.
No report.
New business or other announcements?
I just want to do a shout out to the police department. I saw Officer Davis on Halloween night. She handed out candy to a couple of kids in the the neighborhood and pulled over and they loved it, and I'm sure other officers were out too. So thank you for being involved in the community like that and it was it was great to see people out and I know the fire department was as well, so that was really cool to see and I think the kids all really enjoyed it, so thank you for doing that.
Um, I would like to, some of us are participating in No Shave November, so all proceeds are going to a good cause, throwing twenty bucks, so go to the Hampshire Berlin Food Pantry. You don't have to participate, but your money can.
You can't see Trusty Kelly if he has a full beard yet or not?
He does. Yeah, this is probably going to go as well as it did last year.
No, you know what, it's all going to a good cause.
Yeah, sure, you guys get humor all year.
We do. And people get back, so.
Which then, for those that are not participating, you can still write a check and make a donation.
Absolutely.
So don't think that I'm growing my beard swell.
That was a point. Feel free to write a check or throw a thirty dollar.
I want to just do a one plug then, an additional plug for the Farmston Neighborhoods for the Historical Society. So an excellent opportunity to kind of, to weave the past with the present and then to support our very own. It says Jay Hedges, but it was also mentioned it was Mike Greed.
The mayor was obligated when they printed that that he became a bad.
Okay, then that's fine. But you will be present maybe.
I never thought I would see the day where Ours Rudes and I would headline in the back.
Okay. So excellent opportunity, as it was said, we get about like thirty five to forty people that come out to it and it's a great opportunity to learn about what, what was before and what it's today, and especially for those of us on the board that are making decisions about about new developments, it's kind of nice to see or or understand.
And I'll just say this, I didn't realize Ours was as much into choreography as he is, but man, our interests is.
Have their costumes.
Um, holiday at state this weekend? Please come, I hear Saint Nick might be visiting, maybe?
I don't know.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll.
And we have commemorative ornaments now that are available for purchase at the Village Hall here. They will be for sale at the holiday event this weekend, it's fifteen dollars, thank you, man. Um, makes a great gift. I am sending one to Detroit to remind my in-laws how much they love Hampshire and.
Pretty ornaments for the children.
Oh, yeah, and this is really cool, because this was an old tradition that years ago, schools around the area and children made ornaments for the tree that was downtown. So we're handing out three ornaments at the Hampshire Police Tent this weekend that kids can decorate as long as they get it back here by December first, when we put the tree up in front of Village Hall, the kids' ornaments will be what's on display this year. So hopefully we have enough that we don't need to, I'm not bad about the public works, I think our tree looked phenomenal last year with all the purple ornaments on it. But let's hope that there's enough that we don't have to use any of them and it's all decorated by the community. The twenty twenty six, so expensive? Yes, no, just say it, because I don't know what it is. Yes. Hundred fifty, hundred and fifty. And last but not least, I I told my dad I was going to do this to embarrass him, it's my dad's birthday today, so happy birthday. Hey, wait, Jay's got something.
Yeah, I just had one real quick, since you're talking about ornaments, I do want to tell the board, we did receive the, what that is, a twenty five hundred dollar diversity. Pardon me?
It's called powering the holidays.
Powering the holidays, but our grant was specifically for to purchase the uh, the ornaments. They, and yeah, I was going to mention the snowflakes. So the ornaments especially, because the kids are going to be encouraged to decorate them according to their ethnicity. It's going to be some diversity, and that, that was the nature of our grant. And we're also, we're also, we will also be buying six foot tall snowflakes. So no more Christmas wreaths or Santa Clauses. This, they're really nice, they fit right on our new light bulbs, Dave's already been working.
And for the first time in many years, the outlets work on the lights and the, and the snowflakes will light up.
There you go.
So like.
They should be here by next week.
Thank you.
Well, like last, the last few years, either the wreath didn't work or the omelette didn't work, so, you know, hey.
Yeah, ornaments that they hung up every year, like thirty years old. And they were due for the lanterns that case ago.
Probably have to have one for that.
Anyway.
I almost threw it away, but I figured you might have it on your doors.
Well, thank you, everyone, I know this one meeting is very productive, motion to a year?
Yes.
Okay, a real couple, please.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Aye.
Paul Street.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.